I'm gonna call this meeting to orders, regular meeting of the Marine City Commission at, on February 5th at 7:00 PM. We're gonna all stand and we're gonna have a prayer read by, or led by Reverend Robert Slaton, and immediately following that, we're gonna do a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Good and gracious fathers, we gather here this evening before you, we ask your blessing upon us, your blessing upon the work that we do for the common good. We ask that you would guide us always by your grace and inflame our hearts with the warmth of your love. Please bring abundant fruit from what we offer you, Lord, and let us always go forth with your grace. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Mayor Skatarchik.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
Commissioner Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Acting City Manager, Tillery.
Here.
It moves on to item four, which is communications. We have certificates of achievement for storm water management, industrial site from the DQ for Michael Ettrich and Elizabeth McDonald.
Make a motion that we accept communications and place them on file.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor say, you got something?
Oh, I just wanna say, you know, thank you very much to Mr. Ettrich and Ms. McDonald for taking the time to keep these certifications up, storm water management, that's awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the public portion, comment of the meeting, residents are welcome to come up to the podium, address the commission, please state your name and address and keep your comments to under five minutes.
Hello, John Sapiens, 426 Broadway Street, Marine City. I wanna welcome our new city manager and city attorney, I believe. I think it's great that you're here for temporarily, so that maybe we can make some changes on the police department and the way things are done. I think that you guys have been harassing the citizens now, since I've been in town 15 years illegally many times. You don't see this kinda policing done in St. Clair. You know, look at our town after 10 o'clock at night, it's a ghost town. And that's all, that all started a few years ago. You know, honestly, we can make some changes here, and what we can do is, for one thing, we can get rid of the $400 tax penalty that you put on DUI drivers, an added penalty that you put on drivers in our town and cover your costs or whatever, that's a tax on the stupid and the poor. This alcohol law is a vague unconstitutional law. We can stop the harassment of our citizens by putting breathalyzers in bars, have the police calibrate them, so that our people that, you know, wanna come out and have a beer or two can drive home and not have to worry about being harassed in our town. Another thing that we could do here on this, this commission could do, is reverse these taxes on the poor that allow the police to search your car, things like cracked windshield, headlight out, you know, these used to be 10-day, fix it in 10 days or you get a penalty. Now, it's a penalty, they call them county tickets now. This is the way that some people here think that we should make up the loss in the tax revenue by taxing the poor and the stupid, you know. Those are the people that need the help the most. You know, I got a lot of other ways we can levy taxes on, some other people that deserve to be taxed and raised taxes need to be raised, and that's the people that have wasted over at least a half million dollars on City Hall. I've been here time after time after time trying to tell you guys how to do this job properly and to do it at low cost. I've even offered to donate my time to do it. You tore out the windows, I said, "We're storm for free," put it in writing to the city, tore 'em out. They were a work of art, okay? That's $250,000 in wasted money right there. A lot of things that we need to change in this town, starting with the police, and I'm glad that you're here, thank you sir. Have a nice day.
Do we have anybody else?
Do you have a hand up?
Oh, Rebecca.
Becky Lepley, 539 North William. I just wanted to advise everybody that for around $20, 30 at tops, you can buy a breathalyzer that fits on your keyring and carry it around with yourself if you're concerned about your alcohol blood level.
Do we have anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we move on to item six, which is approval of agenda, and we do have an addition and deletion here.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion to support, do we have any discussion?
What was the meeting?
We originally had, we're going into executive session to discuss the city manager compensation, that was not appropriate thing to do, it has to be done in an open meeting, so it's taken off and it's moved into new business, or unfinished business. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now we have to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, as presented.
Support.
Motion to support, do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The board. And we have consent agenda, which is item 8A, which is a business license for Harbor Health Home Care, they're moving to a new location on De Gersi.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Onto item 9A, which is city, acting city manager compensation. Anybody wanna take the lead on this?
Your honor, if I could, I know that I have discussions with Mr. Tillery.
Your honor, and several members of the commission about what was originally planned as a closed session to discuss a contract for Mr. Tillery. My suggestion, and I guess I'm taking this from Mayor Skatarchik's lead, is that the subcommittee that's been established to conduct the search for Mr. Giber's successor ought to be assigned the task of preparing a proposed contract with Mr. Tillery for his new position effective February 2nd. It can be returned to the commission for review and approval at the time of our February 19th meeting. And I think if that is the consensus of the commission, a motion would be in order, and then we'd need a vote on that.
I think they would be just meeting with the chief and his lawyer or whoever else and just discussing the terms coming up with the contract and then bringing that to present to the board. And I just, since we already have a subcommittee in place, I thought maybe we just move that job onto them.
It's fine.
Someone wanna make a motion, please?
I would support that. To allow the subcommittee to.
Negotiate.
Yeah, negotiate a compensation agreement and bring it to our next meeting.
Support.
Motion to support, do we have any discussion?
Just to say that I think that it's appropriate business for the subcommittee, and I think that's, that works out well. I agree.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you board, we have one more little job to do, subcommittee. That brings us to new business, 10A, we've got resolution 03-2015, which is, it's a watershed budget, right?
And make a motion to support the Northwestern Watershed 2015 budget.
Support.
10A is the resolution, right?
Yes.
Yep. Alright, so we're voting on the resolution, correct?
Pardon?
We're gonna vote on this resolution.
Yes.
So your motion is to approve this resolution? Okay, 'cause that's not what you said.
I'm sorry, the motion is to.
Approve, just read that on the resolution.
Remember, okay, this.
What's that for?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you want to say. That's what I read.
Oh, that's what I thought.
I read this. I read.
Alright, we're good.
Is that right? You want me to do it again?
Sure.
Okay, I make, I move that we accept the resolution of support for the Northeastern Watershed 2015 budget.
I'll second that again.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
Any discussion? I think this is just, you know, one of those kinda yearly paperwork things we go through.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move on to resolution 04-2015, which is recreation programs fee amendment.
I make a motion that we amend the fee schedule for recreation programs as presented.
Support.
Motion to support, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I spoke with Lynn about this, these are new programs that she's adding to the Parks and Rec business, and as such, they were not on the schedule at all, so we've added them to the schedule as their new programs.
Yeah, and there was one rate that was adjusted because of a change, something with books or something like that, so, yeah, you got a few new programs and then one was modified because of a change, a new $35 per student lieu of book supplies or something. Do we have a motion? We do have a motion.
We have a motion and support on the floor.
Do we have any other discussion?
Just to thank Ms. Zerowski for her continued work, and I especially like the fact that we're offering a lifeguard course and continuing the CPR, which I know she has done in the past, I think those are all important things for the community to have access to, so I appreciate her continued work, especially in the day and age of limited budgets and resources, so she always does a great job for us.
Does anybody else have anything?
Just to reiterate, but in, since we do have the CPR course, it's really a good thing to take, I took it last year, the fire department does an excellent job because things change from year to year, and it's totally different, plus they teach you how to use the defibrillators, so it's really a good thing to take.
Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's been adopted. And we got 10C, which is introduction to amend ordinance for the water supply cross connection.
Your honor, I can speak to that, from time to time, the MDQ will provide us model language for a proposed update. Our ordinance actually been revised, I think within the last five years, and was pretty accurate to what the MDQ was looking for, but there were, in my view, some cosmetic changes that they wanted to have made, and this proposed amendment reflects that and keeps us in line with the MDQ's most recent pronouncement on the subject.
So would you consider this just housekeeping?
Yes.
Alright.
I make a motion that we accept the revised cross connection ordinance.
I support.
So a motion to support, any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been adopted. Moving on to item 10D, which is the purchase of a hydraulic jackhammer. Mr. Ettrich, would you like to, could you come to the podium, please?
Why, they can't hear us.
It's for our JCP and Actel, it's for breaking through the frost and pavement, whatever. MBK has the best price, the only distributor is AIS, they give us 10% discount and government discount, AIS has given us 3% also on top of that. I feel that we can't do any better than anyplace else, that's why I'm asking to waive the bidding.
Something that we don't have now, or we have?
We don't have now, last year, we ended up renting one, it cost us roughly around five grand, six grand last year. If we had another one this year, you know, it'd cost another that, but you know, this thing would be wrong forever.
Did we ever have one?
No, we never had one.
You had this budgeted too, didn't you?
Yes, it's budgeted, there's $24,000 for a budget, and they got for 18, 18-2? 18-120.
Do we need to waive the competitive bidding?
That's what this is for.
First.
Yeah, that's what he's requesting, that we waive competitive bidding so he could make this purchase without bids.
I would move to waive the competitive bidding for the purchase of the hydraulic jackhammer as presented.
Support.
Second that motion.
So we have motion and double support?
You can give it to Mr. Ettrich.
You have to do a roll call, it has to be unanimous, I believe.
Well, we're not, do we have to do a roll call?
For waiving the bid.
Yes, it has to be done.
It has to be unanimous.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Skatarchik.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You're welcome. Enjoy your new jackhammer.
Can I make a comment? I do wanna say the difference between hydraulic jackhammer versus an air jackhammer, no comparison. You're gonna do twice the fast work, because I use both of them, and believe me, you're gonna enjoy that hydraulic jackhammer. There, there you go.
I just wanted to say, this is one of the few times that we've gone this fast to waive competitive bidding, and I think it's to your benefit that, because of you, that we do this, because you've been doing such a great job with the DPW, things are getting done, you're looking ahead, seeing that, you know, where things have to be done, and we really appreciate that, that spirit in our community, so thank you very much.
I also like to give a big thank you, and we're very happy that you're doing.
Yes.
Thank you. Is anything else? Alright, moving on to item 10E, which is preliminary 2015, 2016 budget meeting dates. And we've got a bunch of dates here, is there anything we're looking to do right now? 'Cause I think it says we're set by the commission, our meeting 2/19, so.
Yeah, we're supposed to discuss them and then on 2/19.
Alright, so we're trying to find the appropriate dates right now? Is that what we're doing?
Preliminary, we think they were, but we need everybody to just double check and make sure the board is, they're acceptable to the board, sir.
So, looking at these dates, does anybody have any comments? February 9th budget draft submitted to city manager, but then we got February 19th through 20th, Thursday, Friday, the budget review with department heads, which doesn't really involve us. And we've got February 27th, 2015, which is budget submitted to city commission, so that's when we get our first look at it.
You thought that was, that was fine?
Yeah, so far, it doesn't affect us, but then we move on to preliminary budget review, city commission, ten of dates, they're looking to start this process March 24th through 26th.
When you said the budget is submitted to commission on the 27th, does that just mean that it's passed out to us to look at it at that time? Okay. So the review would begin on the 19th, huh? Possible?
No, it says the 19th, they wants to set the dates, affirm dates, right?
Department head review, and then they're gonna be, they want you to choose the dates by the 19th, and then you'll get the budget on the 27th.
I get it.
And then she's gonna give you like a month to look at it and discuss and, you know, and have the meetings the weekend, March 24th through 26th.
Yeah, that's even earlier than last year, isn't it? I think that's, I don't think we started that process until April last year.
No, it was March.
Was it March?
And the year before was March 14th.
Yeah.
It was March.
Seems like a good date, so, March, would, do we need to do the others at the same time?
None of them have to be done at this meeting?
No.
Get started with the first and then, and then go from there, when you find out what you need, how much more you need, et cetera. You set up dates for February, I'm sorry, where am I now? March 24th, 25th, 26th if needed?
I think, I think the treasurer wanted all of those dates, 4th, 5th, and 6th originally slated, if we don't need them all, we can do with them later.
I believe that's how we've done it the past several years, is that we get through where we can at a natural stopping point in the two nights, and then wrap up what we can on the third night. And from my perspective, I'd rather schedule more days than what we think we might need and have that built in, so it doesn't complicate the situation once we get upon it, it's pretty important.
Well, I don't have any trips planned, so it all works for me.
You want a motion then?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we set our preliminary, excuse me, our budget, preliminary budget review for March 24th, 25th, and 26th as needed.
Support.
Motion to support, any other discussion? I mean, I guess we could always make changes later if we have to. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we've got our preliminary budget date set. Moving on to 10F, which is Contra Ville Township sewer contract. This again is one of those things we look at every year. Is there anything you wanna add to this, Mr. Tillery?
No, sir, this was reviewed by McBride Manley, these is the recommended sewer rates for board's consideration.
So, at this point, we're just looking for us to approve this, these, this report?
Yes, sir.
Oh, this is for last year.
Correct, it's a review.
This is the year ending June 30th.
Yeah, this is just a report reviewing the.
Unaudited report.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the sewer rate computation for year ended June 30th of 2014.
Support.
Motion to support, any questions?
Thank you.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sewer rate computation has been approved. Moving on to 11, which is financial business, we have disbursements including payroll.
I move to approve the disbursements including payroll and the amount of $214,283.18 as presented.
I thought it heard support.
Okay, a motion to support, do we have any discussion? Commissioner Hendrick?
At the very last page of this section, it gives us a final payout for the previous city manager, and I asked the city attorney to kinda take a look at how that was calculated based on the contract versus what the payout is, but I wanna understand that. So I'd like to know if we could remove that and save it till next meeting, that portion, until he takes a look at it.
Is that appropriate?
I think that there's been a motion made and supported, and I think that, I don't know if there's been a motion made to table and if there's support.
Yeah, that's true, we do have a motion on the.
I withdraw my motion.
I made the motion.
Yeah, I don't think you can withdraw it, I think we need to vote on it, so either, I don't know, what do we do at this point? I guess you would.
There could be a motion to amend, or we vote on the existing. Motion to amend would supersede, if I'm understanding that correctly.
That's correct. Do you wanna make a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend the previous motion to remove the final pay for the city manager until it can be evaluated by the city attorney.
Support.
So we have motion and support, discussion? So in doing this, by removing this from this budget approval, would, that money just, does not get paid out at this time, or has the money already been paid out?
I don't know, it would not be approved by the commission, obviously, until that review's complete.
Has this money been paid out?
I believe the money's been paid out, sir. I looked at the computations when my first stay alongside with the contract, and the hours were computed correctly, and that goes along with his pay scale later, but the hours were appropriate to the contract that I looked at.
And it was in line with our employee manual?
Yes, sir.
Because I believe they're entitled to all those vacation days and sick paydays and all that stuff, according to the policy.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and my reasoning is because of his contract, which states he only gets 160 hours of non-bankable, so that's why I want to make sure that that was done right, because his contract says he only gets this for non-bankable, which means he can't bank them year to year. So we wanted to make sure the interpretation was correct, that's all I'm looking for. If it was done properly, fine, I just wanna make sure, based on this language in his contract, that it was interpreted like.
Yeah, which is a little bit of a problem if we determine it isn't, I guess we'd have to request a.
Deal with that when it comes.
Yeah.
I have no problem with additional set of eyes, I think that's always very prudent, especially if there's a concern, so I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, that's all, it's, and, you know, we don't know how this was interpreted when they wrote it.
I don't doubt that the computation seemed accurate at the time, but if someone wishes to have an additional set of eyes, I never have a problem with that.
So, just to recap, we'd be, this vote would be to approve the agenda minus the compensation for the city manager.
No, the motion on the floor, as my understanding would be, to approve for, a motion for amending the motion for approval.
So we have a motion just to amend the motion?
Correct, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Alright, so the motion has been amended, so now, now we have a motion to approve the agenda less, right, which would be a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Commissioner Hendrick, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Skatarchik.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, so now we move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, first, I want to congratulate the DPW on doing such an excellent job. Third largest snowfall on record, I believe, and they did a fabulous job, I was on the phone all weekend with them, and by Monday, they were looking pretty tired, but they were still working. Come in your crew for me as well, Mike, you guys did a great job. Over the last two weeks, we've been attending several meetings, we met with Tetra Tech about the, and the DPW superintendent about digitizing the cemetery to put online, we had a TIF meeting, we had a historical commission meeting, I attended the pension board meeting with the mayor and the mayor pro tem, we had a meeting in my office regarding the SAW grant, which is the sewer and wastewater grant with Tetra Tech, that project is progressing and on track. The pharmacy development downtown, we had a meeting regarding that, and that is progressing. We met with the department heads, finished our 10-year capital investment plan, I've had several meetings regarding the hotel project, I've had teleconferences with the Brownfield Authority, I've had some meetings with the Brownfield Authority downtown, I've had several meetings with Mr. and Mrs. Burton, the hotel project continues forward, and it is, there are a lot of steps to go, but everything is on track, and we're soon to afford with that. The facade project, Riviera signed their contract and work is authorized to commence on the Riviera's facade project. We will not be eligible for any further facade grants. The city's mean income has risen above 50% low or moderate income, so we're no longer eligible for the facade grant, we're in the, I think, 43% of low to moderate income. The. of low to moderate income. The rental rehab project continues. We met with the dental office. They are moving forward with their project. We reviewed their plans, and that continues. And that's all I've got for the last two weeks. There's, uh, everything is on track, and as far as we know, train's on the track.
Okay. Why don't you get us started, Mr. Simpson?
Um, just to go what Mr. Hillary said, Mr. Ettrich and the rest of the DPW workers, outstanding job, and especially in light of the Super Bowl Sunday as well. I know a lot of you guys are fans, but, uh, it was nice to be able to ask those of us that had to work the following morning to be able to get out. I live on a dead-end street, which is always problematic, I'm sure, for larger machines to get in, and I was able to get out and, um, and again, a record snowfall, so I appreciate all the hard work. And as was indicated earlier, too, your continued work on the budget, by my recollection, just in recent times, you've had two pieces of equipment and additional accessories that were budgeted for that has come in substantially under budget, so we always appreciate that in lieu of these times. So, thank you very much for that. I very much appreciate that. That's all I had for today. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Avery?
Yes, thank you for the snow removal. I'm aware that many of the speakers up here cannot be heard by the people in the audience, which is possibly why we don't get as many people. I know I quit going before, several years ago, because we couldn't hear. Maybe in our budget-conscious times, a way to generate something, I will turn in my tablet, and we can buy megaphones or something so that people can hear, or maybe we just reconfigure the room a little bit so that we're closer to an audience, because it is difficult and it's kind of futile to sit out there when you cannot hear what goes on, so it isn't really a public meeting that way. I would, I thank the people who are doing snow shoveling jobs often, but we do have a lot of areas where it gets left, and it is difficult at the intersection of roads where people don't shovel the snow that has been thrown up from the plows that we're glad to come by, that into, into the crosswalks. And, um, so we have to encourage people to try to keep the areas open. There's a lot of tracks in the snow, so people are walking. Thank you.
Commissioner Hattick?
All right, I'm gonna continue with the snow issue. I want to thank you for doing the two bridges, because they were horrendous. I mean, I'm, I'm a, I'm six foot tall, and the Biff Bridge was up to my knees to get across that bridge the one day, so I really appreciate those two bridges, and I'm sure the kids do, too. And I have to agree, we've got a real issue with the sidewalks. I mean, I walk all the time. I think one thing we want to make sure, a code enforcement guy looks at is the fact that from Chartered down to Kmart, we get all those sidewalks done, because last weekend, there was a gentleman walking in the road because he couldn't get through. And the ones along Parker, too, a lot of times are an issue for people, and, and I've seen him walk in the road, which is very, very dangerous. So, some of these sidewalks, we definitely have to really look at and make sure they get taken care of, probably by code enforcement. I just ask everybody, please try to get them done. If, if you're having difficulties or you're older and you're having difficulties, there's agencies that can help you do it. But what I find is a lot of them, it's usually the older people are pretty conscious about having somebody do it, and some of the younger people that aren't getting out there to do it. We gotta get them done. The kids are trying to get to school. We have the poor mail carriers trying to deliver mail, and I write, it's, you're right about the intersections. I, I'm on a corner. I know what it's like to have to dig that out, but we dig them out. And there was a couple of them when I'm walking through town, I can't get through because they're piled like this, and people will clean their sidewalk up to that and then leave this big barrier. I know it's difficult, but we gotta get it done so that everybody can walk safely without killing themselves.
And what was the second instance? I've got Chartered to Kmart.
Chartered to Kmart on the west side, that sidewalk, and then both sides of Parker, we gotta kind of watch out for, because there's some areas where they just pile it up there, you just can't get through. It's, uh, it's really difficult. And then the other thing is, is I don't know if anybody's noticed, the fire department, just, just informational, they've reposted these parking spots out front here, because they used to be posted for fire personnel only, and then the signs disappeared while they're back. And the only reason why they do that is when there's elections and other items, the parking has been so bad because of the elections, they don't have any place to park when there's a a fire or a rescue. So, they've tried to designate these two spots out front here, and they've got them posted, so I, I'm just asking everybody, if you have to come here for any reason, please try not to use those spots so that the fire department can keep them clear for emergencies. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Lovett?
Well, the snow portion's an issue, and noticed a lot of businesses also are not doing their sidewalks, not just individual. The question that I have is if a business pushes all their snow up toward the street, does that then eliminate them from having to do the sidewalk because you can walk through their lot? We have a couple of businesses that are doing that.
They should not, they should not put snow on the street.
To, um, anyway, it's, uh, it is difficult, and it always is a problem when we have snow to, to get everybody out there, they're doing that. Hearing is always a problem, and I can understand. I, I try to get up to the mic. I know we've tried a couple of times, and if we increase the sound in the fire chief's office, I understand it does go up, and, and if we do get the mics, I mean, you know, Commissioner Hendrick and I are the only two that have our mics up fairly close, but if I'm not mistaken, you can hear us better. I'm not sure. I'm not out there, but I think maybe we can investigate some of that and try to work, at least with what we have, to improve it the best that we can. But I know a couple of times, we went in and turned the sounds up, and I understood it was better then, so that might be something we can look into.
I think you run into a eventual feedback issue if you go too high.
Right, but there hadn't been those, those a couple of times. It's just something to look at. I understand what you're saying, too. Also, congratulations to Coach Star Shelley. A couple of weeks ago now, I didn't get a chance to, to say this before, but he has been inducted into the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association Hall of Fame, so he certainly has earned that, along with his teams there at Marine City High. So, we think, you know, congratulate them and thank them very much for that. I, I guess I have a couple of things that I want to say, and that's about the power of positive thinking and, and working together to do things done. I, I think the last meeting, when we had a number of people here who spoke about, in, in essence, disagreeing with something that this commission had done a couple of weeks previously, but it was done in a very positive manner. They, they spoke up. They said, you know, this is, we're not, you know, here to blame anybody, but, you know, this is what we would like. This is what we would see, and, and offered solution. But at the same time, I think we have to remember what our responsibility is as, as a city commission. The Michigan State University Extension Office says this, and I quote, "When appointed or elected to an elected body, you are no longer an individual citizen. Your constituents are everyone in the community. As an elected or appointed official, you are acting in a group, which is the government, and that group does not have individual rights, ensuring we are the government. We must do what is right, not popular," end of quote. And so, even though there may have been fifty people here last week, maybe we would have disagreed with them, but fifty represents forty-five hundred, and, you know, we have to do what we see is right and what we feel is right, and not necessarily because, you know, five people said something to us. I'm not saying that happened. I'm just saying that transparency is, transparency is also important in our dealing, and as a council, this council has worked harder than it being transparent. We do discuss. We do talk about things. We throw ideas out and discuss them. And a few citizens have commented that they appreciate this, so hopefully, we'll continue to do this and give time and room to look at both sides of an issue. We're not an east-side, west-side city. We are one city, and we need to continue to work on that. Several business people outside this community have invested greatly to our advancement. Todd May at the sweet shop, the Burton is now with certainly the two theaters and, and looking at hotels within the city, has made Marine City a destination place, and they've chosen this city because of this attitude here, that we are open, that we do discuss, and the, and the positive influence of, of the, the people of this community and the support of this community. We want to keep it that way. But it, it's time for us, as we look at, and I should mention the Clingers also, I'm sorry to have left them out, and I'm sure there are many others, but we are going to be looking at budgets, and there are some difficult decisions that will have to be made if we want to keep our city growing, if we want to keep it on the radar or under the radar, as the TV show says. But it's our decision, it's our responsibility to make those hard decisions and do what is right for this community. So, I don't, I guess just, you know, to say that we shouldn't have to worry about whether we're going to be recalled or re-elected or not, but that we have to make those choices, and, and we need the support of the community, of course, behind us to understand and realize that what we decide, hopefully, we are working our best to see that is the right thing for this city, to keep it moving forward. That was all I had to say. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Now that we've got this wonderful little gift here, will we get a packet next, or do we have to jump into the fire?
If, if you request one, you'll get a packet, sir.
Okay.
I think you should probably keep the packets going for a while, till they get used to...
All right. At least give us a meeting to get up this...
You might want more, more than one or two meetings, but...
That's it. Thanks.
A couple of things I need, I wanted to say is, first of all, I want to say thank you for having our city attorney here for the first meeting with our new city manager for the time being. I just feel a little bit more comfortable in case something went wrong, it got caught, ripped in the bud. The other thing I, I did want to say about the sidewalks, you know, there's a lot of kids out there that would like to have a nice job, you know, they would earn it. We had a lot of snow, and to me, living on a corner, believe me, I shovel a lot of sidewalk, and plus, I help out. I like to help out my neighbors, and it was an honor to help them out, but I saw the kids going around, you know, with the neighborhood, you know, wanting to shovel their snow, and when I felt like, you know what, it's not like they couldn't afford it. They could have, and I believe that there should be some fines if they don't want to shovel their snow, in case if there is a problem or something, a financial, something, one thing or another, but kids can use a job. You know, give a kid a job to, to earn their money and let them shovel the snow for you, you know, and, and, and be gracious and, and saying, yeah, thank you for having it done, and I'm supporting the, the youth in our, in our community. The other thing I wanted to say is that we kind of had a challenge last, last commission meeting where a person spoke up and said, "What is your vision for the city?" And I was taking that to heart because I have many visions for our city, and I'm waiting for the right opportunity to, to bring out my vision and having everybody on same, on the same page, but yet, how do you finance certain things? Well, there's different things about getting grants. One of my main objectives is, is having the west and the east meet each other. We have the whole state of Michigan, and a lot of people, I love the Luddington, the Mason County, that's on the west side of the state, is very much into tourism, and a lot of people don't realize the value that we have over here in Marine City, because we have the ferry to Canada, and we have other natural resources as Luddington has the Badger that goes to Wisconsin. They have a ferry ride, but to me, one goal is, I would love to see the state of Michigan get together and let's make this a tourist destination that not just Marine City, but across the state, and let the state of Michigan prosper. And there's another thing that I feel, that I see in Marine City that could very well possibility happen, and that is with our waterfront, with the beach area, I've done investigating work, I would love to have ten slips put in right by the beachfront where you want to have, invite boater, boaters to come into our community, and people love, anybody that has a yacht or a nice-sized boat want to entertain, and that's an ideal spot right there by the beach where you got the bathrooms, you got the beachfront, you can have a nice, uh, uh, fire pit where the boats can spend the night, and the other thing is, well, with the current, I have done my investigating work, and, and dealing with the current, you're gonna have to make a break wall, because it is a strong current, and you don't want your boats all battered up. But there's different things that I'm getting into motion, and I'm finding out who I can contact and going, going the further mile. I don't want to just put a burden onto our city or say, well, Tifa can pay for it. I'm not worried about Tifa. Tifa's in our district, one thing or another, but if I can financially get a grant, there's different possibilities, and that's just a starter. When you had said, "Does our commission think of anything else, one, one thing or another?" Yeah, but, you know, the thing is, you gotta have the right opportunity, and you want to be, count your, you want to count the cost. You don't want to just jump into something and, and not counting the cost and then be devastated that it doesn't, it doesn't make out and it doesn't do as good for the city that you planned. You want to, you want to be mindful of the loss and what your odds of doing something. The other thing is, in the vision, my, my greatest thing is communication, and sometimes with communication, does not have to cost a lot of money, and to me, I love listening to radio. There's things that one can do and paint a picture of the town, and having a, just example, I, I talked to the city, uh, the business owners, this is back in oh-nine when I was on the Tifa board. Boy, they were excited about it when I was talking about having a radio. Well, the thing was, it wasn't at the right time. But now, as I see our, our community being more conscious of being, having a destination point, well, there's an opportunity, I can bring it up again, but there again, I don't necessarily have to go to Tifa. There's, there's different grants, I'm finding out, that I could go about doing it, because once you paint a picture of a town, people will find out their information, and having a radio station that describes your town and also gives you any information, and you could be in your house or you could be on your car. Originally, I had it set up where you could have been at twenty-six mile road and county line, where it could have beeline, so any kind of information that could go in your town, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it just has to be for Marine City. We can broaden it and expand it, and if the other communities will catch on, businesses attract other businesses, and once they start seeing there's a gold mine and there's communication, then you don't have to say, well, I didn't know about it, you know? I just want to go forward, and there's many other things that I have in my mind that I want to see prosperity come to the people. I believe this is going to be a, a really prosperous year in two thousand fifteen, and, and but as far as traveling goes with gas mileage, it was a couple of weeks ago, I paid a dollar sixty-five a gallon. That was fantastic. I went to Luddington on twenty-one dollars, you know, to, to travel the distance, and believe me, I love Luddington, and I've talked to different people that is involved, the, the community over there, and they found it very exciting. that is involved, the community over there, and they found it very exciting. If I can coordinate, get a plan going as a people to travel, especially in the fall, or to see the colors or other things in the summertime, there's so many opportunities. I just feel like they're out there. I want to reach for it, and let's make Marine City a fabulous place. The only thing is, once we get very popular, you know, our values are going to go up. Where people are going to want to jump in and move in and buy the houses. And as things go up in value, so does the taxes, you know? I mean, I hate to say it that way. But if your house is worth more, people don't have a problem with paying the extra taxes. And I just feel like we have a strong community, and I've been listening to people, and I just feel like there's part of me, I'm almost afraid to, to explode my ideas, but then, I don't want to be shut down. I just feel like, you know what, there's a right time and there's a wrong time. And, and when that lady expressed, "What is your view?", I feel like, you know what, I got a lot more that's coming, you know? And I just feel like, let's just see how I could go about doing it. And I'm trying to get a grant, and this way, it doesn't cost the city anything, and it's going to prosper our, our community. Thank you.
We are allowed to say whatever on our mind, but I would hope that people keep their comments at a reasonable length just out of respect for other people at the commission. Because we all needed time to say our piece, and if it gets too wordy, then it takes away from other people. In regards to some of your comments, Commissioner Lovett, I'm not quite sure where you're going. I do feel like the decisions I make are for the, you know, the right thing for the community. We did not make a decision that was reversed. I believe you said that. We hadn't made a decision yet. We were about to make a decision or have a discussion, so... I do, do agree that we need to act in the best interests of the city, but that's also something that we shouldn't do in a vacuum, and I appreciated all the input that came in on that day. In regards to the snowfall and the complaints about the sidewalks and everything, that's a problem in every community, and when you have that much snow, it's tough. But, yeah, I too would hope everybody'd get out there and do their best. But I'd just like to say that in our little community here, it was much better than anywhere else I had to go. Because I work in Oakland County, Macomb County, and that day, I was the only person that made it to work. Not one other person could get down their street or either driveway. So I was the only person, so thank you, Mike. I was the only person in my company that didn't have a snow day.
So you're blaming them.
So, you know, as bad as it seems here sometimes, we do a pretty good job, and it's a lot better than other communities. As of today, I was in Macomb Township, there's still streets, residential streets, that aren't plowed, sidewalks that aren't plowed. People still haven't totally dug out yet. So we do a good job here, and I think that's one of the benefits of being in a small community. And that's about all I got. The next agenda, you know, make sure, there's some items that some people told me they want on the next agenda. Make sure you remind me, so I don't forget. I will have an agenda, we'll do an agenda meeting the Friday prior to the following week, so we'll make sure we get that all set for everybody. And to close the meeting, because that's my new thing now, like I said, I'm going to have a little quote. This one's from Albert Einstein. "There are two ways to live. You can live as if nothing is a miracle, or you can live as if everything is a miracle." All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.